All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Special Meeting, Wednesday, April 27, 2022, at 7:00 PM, in the Town Hall Rose Room. Can we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors?
I'm a visitor.
Okay, could you approach here and just state your name?
Oh, yes, Robin Anders. Oh, do I have to introduce?
Yeah.
Maybe you don't want me.
I don't know how to begin.
That's fine. Yeah, don't worry about that. That's fine. Just state your name.
Hi, I'm new to Clinton, two years, and my name's Robin Anders.
Okay. Welcome. Anybody else?
I'm Abby Anders, that's my mother, and we live off of Liberty Street.
Great. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Item number three, the approval of the minutes from the April 6, 2022 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any comments?
Is this on a public hearing?
The minutes from the April 6, 2022.
Of the early warning meeting? Got it.
Chris, can I say something?
Not right yet, one second.
It had to do with the minutes.
Okay, but the minutes are, we've got to talk amongst council members on the minutes. So this is for here. Anybody have any comments here at the table?
There was the two set of minutes for the April 6.
I'm referring to the evening budget hearing, and I just wanted to make a comment that the minutes say that I made a friendly amendment. I don't know what a friendly amendment is. I did not make that.
Those are the minutes for the public hearing. This is just, we're just talking about the regular.
Mary said it's for both.
For both. This is for both.
Oh, I didn't understand.
Yes. And, second of all, it was stated at the meeting by Christine that Carol had the option to decide whether that amendment would be accepted or not. And I went to the most recent Roberts rules, and it seems that those are treated like any other amendment, friendly or otherwise, and everyone needs to vote on it. And I just wanted to say that. I know that there's nothing else to do about it, but as I'm learning this, I want to make sure that if there are other friendly amendments in the future, that we all do have to vote on them. I learned that in the process.
So you're looking for a motion to amend the minutes, or you just?
I'll just ask to take the friendly away, and I wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next item number four, the appointments and reappointments. So we have one appointment, and then one, two, three, four, five reappointments. So Celeste Calabota for the Human Services Advisory Board until 6:30, 2024. We did get an email and information on her, with kind of her background and what she was looking to do, and she would be replacing somebody who just recently resigned. So there is a need for that on the board. So we'll just look for a motion to appoint Celeste.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Comments? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And then the next five are all just reappointments. So probably just doing one of those ones, because they're all reappointments. So we'll do Dara Anofrio Design Review Board until 6:30, 2025, Melanie Anas Fair Rent Commission until 6:30, 2026, Maureen Wellman Historic District Commission until 6:30, 2027, Zachary Plourd Sustainability Committee until 6:30, 2024, and Al Walker Water Pollution Control Commission until 6:30, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you all. Item number five, which is the Beautification Committee Discussion.
So I guess, I mean, Bruce has been here a couple times, so I guess we're just, I guess, discussing on how we want to move forward with this committee. I guess this is the discussion at this point. I guess the last meeting, we talked about it briefly. So I don't know if we just want to kind of jump in to see how we want to proceed. I guess there's a charge, and how many members of the committee?
You'd have to draft up a charge.
Yep.
The council needs to give me some direction that you want to proceed with this, so that I can then draft up a charge. The membership needs to be determined. There is a desire to have it be open and flexible. The normal way is you pick a set number of folks. I was trying to find an example of a community that seemed to have a more open approach to beautification committees. That doesn't seem to be the way it actually panned out, so you're back to looking for a specific number. I was asked to conduct some research on town contributions. So CCM did some of that on my behalf, and then I did others. So some towns do this, and there's 169 towns, so it's 169 different ways of doing it. Some communities have an official beautification committee. So either it's in effect or it's defunct. Some of them provide funding to a local garden club or some other organization that takes on an individual beautification project, and that's it. Budget contributions range from nothing up to about $5,000 and everything in between, depending on the community. Some of the towns that do nothing, there's a trust and donations that support the beautification committee. So the dollar amount is kind of all over the place, but seems to be more skewing to the lower end of the spectrum.
Carl, about the money, if the council were to give them a certain amount of money, would they also be allowed to fundraise? Would they be able to write grants, or did you tell me last time that you would have to be responsible for those grants?
You would be creating a town committee or a town organization by charter. Those grants would have to flow through and get to the council before there's any application. So I suppose they could be empowered to pursue grants, but there should be some touching base with staff that they're not going doing their own thing.
Could they fundraise?
I suppose you could fundraise. But some financial issues we'd have to figure out for how dollars should be segregated, and the rest, I don't know whether it's tax deductible, because it's not a 501(c)(3), it's a town organization. But that's not my concern, that's the donor's concern.
Yeah, so the fundraising obviously would probably be, I guess we talked about that last time, I guess when they were here, about possibly doing some fundraising. So I mean, if that's the path that they would like to go down, we'd just have to make sure it was set up, I guess, properly. So, I mean, what about membership? Anybody have any ideas on feelings on membership, the number of people, or, you know, how they want to proceed with that, so that we can kind of get this ball rolling, so that we can get this charge in place?
Can we go back to the beginning? So are you saying, Carl, that this is an organization you would like to see become charter-driven, that you would like to see this be an actual committee that is under the? I don't think that was ever.
No, it was, the charter lays out the grant acceptance process.
Enough talking about grants, just talking about the setup of the committee.
This group, the conversation's been, as an ad hoc advisor.
Okay, how is a design review board set up?
Advisory. They're an advisory committee.
But they're by ordinance.
Okay. I'm just trying to find a simple way to get this going. I mean, there are a lot of people who want to get to work on projects right now.
The ad hoc process, to me, seemed faster than drafting an ordinance.
So what do you have to do to make an ad hoc committee?
I can write up a charge for your next meeting, I just need some direction for my membership, but you guys want to do it.
What would be the difference between what you would write up and what Bruce presented last time?
Bruce wrote up a charge, you'd have to write up something a little bit more with specific steps of what things they're going to do, and then the membership piece, and then kind of structural issues like bylaws and how they conduct business.
Okay, well.
So when you've created other ad hoc committees, there's been a more formal document that has the charge, the membership, and other specifics that are unique to just that group.
Oh, no, I don't know if you had ad hoc committees where it was just completely ad hoc to wait, just what did it stop?
The most recent.
I'm trying to get away from that.
Years went by. What did you say?
The most recent ad hoc committees.
The most recent, no, now you're, mm.
Well, I mean, obviously that would probably be the best path to go, because then there is direction, then everybody knows, everybody's on the same page. We all can work together as it relates to that, as far as just something happening, and then they're doing something, we're thinking something different, and then we're all over the place, and then nothing's getting done.
Okay, so I would think that that would be the best avenue for moving forward. So is there anything that that committee can be doing right now while that background is being laid? While that, I mean, you know, the next meeting would be, well, next week, actually.
Next week.
Do you think we'd be able to have something by then?
Yes, I can have something for it.
Something that would be approvable, so that they could be a committee as of next Wednesday?
Yes.
So we need to.
If you are on board and you give me the direction I need to write it, I can write it.
So you need to know right now what the number for members would be on that committee?
Well, can I say something first?
Sure.
We have to establish the committee first, so I'd like to say my piece again.
But he needs that information.
I understand.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to say is, I don't see why we have to have another formal town committee. We have committees that operate, for instance, like the Pretty Committee, that's been operating for years.
No, they are obsolete. They don't exist.
I'm just saying, that was one. We have Families Helping Families, which is another committee, which doesn't have to have the title Town of Clinton Committee. I just don't understand why we have to establish a formal town committee to have this beautification committee. They're wonderful people, they're going to do a wonderful job. They could be like other committees that have done things for this town, come forward and say, here, we have a plan, we have the money to take care of that plan, we'd like to have you approve it, and we approve it, like they have been doing through the years. Why do we have to have a formal town committee? Making a formal town committee, to me, is making another step of bureaucracy, another step of government, and like Ronald Reagan said, best government is less government. We can't keep adding committees, committees, committees. What does the title Town of Clinton Beautification Committee do any more for than if it's just a beautification committee, period?
It means that.
And then we help.
It means the council's behind them, and Bruce really wants the council.
We could be behind them, we could be behind all of them. We're always behind them. We're behind every committee or group that comes in the door and tries to do something for the Town of Clinton. When have we never been behind someone?
But on a more practical level, it's funding.
Oh, funding. There you go. There's the key. So now you're going to add another element to town funding, and maybe it's only a couple of bucks this year, but it will grow, and then eventually we'll be funding another agency. I just don't think that we should be in that.
Dennis.
Go ahead, you want to interrupt me, go ahead, but if I interrupt you, you get all signed.
Well, no, you're asking questions.
I'm done.
You're asking questions, and Bruce has answered several of these questions that you're asking.
I'm asking you, the committee, and then asking him, I'm asking you as a council, why do we have to make, you know, there's a list right here, and if you ever go on our website, there's committees here that haven't met since 216, 214, 213, 215, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There's six committees here that haven't had minutes or anything else. We're going to establish another committee. For what reason?
Dennis, may I answer?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I have the goals that you established last time. I had a conversation with Carl today, and I learned how important these goals are that a council establishes, and that everything that we do is supposed to lead to implementing these goals. And goal number three is preserve and enhance the quality of life that makes Clinton a desirable location. And four is economic development that enhances a community. This beautification committee would work towards both, would make our downtown more beautiful, something that we all want and we only talk about.
What I would say is, and I'm not as close to this as you guys are, but I would agree that we don't need to add all these different committees that come along, but this one, I'm behind. This is something that is, to me, is really important. So I think we do need to be stricter on who we allow these new advisory committees, but, you know, and maybe we can get rid of some of the other ones that aren't meeting, and we can add the ones that we all agree that will add value to the town.
I mean, the establishment of an advisory committee, then, I mean, just like we have with the other ones that we've established, at least it keeps the communications open between those advisory committees, because they still are under the jurisdiction of the town council. I mean, ultimately, I mean, by listening to everything, I think ultimately the beautification committee wants to do this as an advisory committee for some funding. I'm assuming that would be one of the things. So yes, there's going to be a funding component to all of this, you know, what that is, what that isn't, I mean, we don't know now. We're still working at the infancy stage of this group and finding out kind of what they want to put together, what they want to do, you know. And again, yes, will there be funding issues? I'm assuming that they're going to look for some funding. But again, it all comes back to the council. So then the council ultimately would have that decision on what we do and don't do as it relates to funding, because that would be part of our talks. So, you know, I think it's, you know, I think everybody can agree, beautification committee, there are other groups out there that did it, but then again, well, they're out doing this, they're out doing that, and there's no communications between any of them. I mean, I can say for one, I got a phone call over, or last week, I got an email wondering, is there somebody that was going to go clean up the beach? I think that's what it was, the beach. And I'm like, I don't know. So then you got to make some phone calls to find out who's cleaning up the beach. Well, nobody's cleaning up the beach, they're cleaning up whatever, someplace else in town, which is great, because people are doing it, but, you know, it's sort of, you know, give a direction of the town, that there's one committee that if people would like to be involved, and they would like to do things, then at least there's some avenue of, you know, to the end of all of this, you know. And ultimately, I believe that's, you know, something that might be good, beneficial. The funding side of it, yes, it's going to come back to us, and then we'll have the, you know, the discussions at that point. You know, advisory committees are good, but, I mean, they still need direction. We're going to give it a charge, we get the membership, so we have sort of not control of it, but at least open discussions with that group, so that we're all working for the same thing, so that we don't have groups all over the place doing stuff, so.
And one advantage of this one is it does bring 13 groups in town together.
Hopefully.
Well.
Right. But I mean, that's what I mean. I mean, that's, you know, gives more direction, so that we're all on the same page, let's put it that way. So we're all working towards a common goal, I should say.
And when you're asking if it's going to be an open committee, is that what, you're just saying, we pick a certain amount of members, and it doesn't matter whether, what party affiliation? Is that what that means?
I think there'd still have to be a majority-minority that falls into place on an advisory.
I think we could pull that off.
Advisory, I don't think it's critical.
Yeah. So I mean, again, I think the membership is more so for that committee, because if you say, well, it's an open membership, then you get 20 people showing up, and you get 20 opinions, and then it becomes a problem, because then you're battling each other about what to do. Well, no, I want to do that. Well, no, I want to do that. Well, it mean, personally, the fewer number of people on that membership number, I think, would be more beneficial to getting something done. That's my opinion, rather than an open membership where you have a lot of voices.
I'll throw out the number seven.
Second.
That's how it works, for me.
What other items do you need, other than membership? That's it?
If there's the intent to do it, I will write up a charge.
So would you like to make a motion, then, to the formation of an advisory committee for the beautification committee?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the Clinton Town Council forms a beautification committee.
Second.
Wait a second, okay. All right, discussion, so then I guess the only discussion is sort of, kind of, who's on that committee? I guess maybe we should address that, like, membership?
Did we decide how many members?
We decided seven.
You need a charge to make it official, so the motion should be to form a reading the charge.
Okay. So any other further discussion?
Just out of curiosity, we need as many people on this board as we do the Board of Ed?
A lot of work to be done in town.
$35 million?
That's two separate items. We're not going down that path, though.
All right.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Both.
Abstained? Dennis in the time room. All right, so that we'll have that for next meeting. Okay? Yep. All right, we're now on to the line item transfer requests. We have two on the board for tonight. One is for the Board of Education, and one is for DPW. The first one up is the Board of Education. They've come forth with a $22,000 and a $63,000 transfer request, one for the Elliott Gym Floor, which is $22,000. The Morgan Tennis Courts, I'm assuming to redo the tennis courts, is what the cost that that is, is $63,000. Those items will be coming from the Elliott Roof Replacement for $22, and the Elliott Water Pipe for $63,000.
This was part of the budget, where idle projects were going to be closed out in order to fund new requests, so that's why this is now moving forward.
So this is, just so I understand it, I think I love this, but I just want to make sure I understand it. So any projects that we had extra money in for fiscal year '22, we're going to take that money and put it towards projects that they would have had for next fiscal year?
That was the concept when I put the budget together for the council to act on. I was looking for concurrence before we did this, and I brought that up as needing concurrence when we had the meeting after the public hearing, so.
Okay, that's what I thought it was.
The signature of the superintendent is perhaps a little sooner than your discussion, but they are looking to move forward, and I sat on this until such time as you guys agreed that how you wanted the budget to go forward. There'll be another one that will have to come forward for town projects, which will be similarly funded.
So the money is coming from the Elliott Roof Replacement, $22,000. Where was that money again, that was left over from our roof project?
Correct. These are, the frums are leftover balances where the project is closed, and the dollars are available to be swept.
I was going to say, hopefully it's not the roof over the floor.
Any other comments? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next up is the DPW. So they have a bucket truck that needs a new engine, catastrophic failure of critical components. So we all have gotten the estimate, and we also have a letter from DPW indicating the need for it and what its uses are. Anybody have any comments or questions on this at this point? Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. We will now move on to item number seven, which is the approval of the project graduation So this was on, the town used to, in the past, give money to Project Graduation for their graduation party that they had after, the function that they provide to all the students. So it was always on before, because of COVID, obviously it didn't exist for the last two years, they've come back again, and they've asked for $1,500 for project graduation. So that is the, kind of, the motion that we would look to do, is to approve a $1,500 adjustment to project graduation funding.
Don't move it.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. On to number eight, which is the Finance Director's Report, Sue.
Good evening, everybody. The report is for the results through March, which is the ninth month of fiscal '22, so we're three quarters of the way through the year. March is generally a slow activity month. Revenues were $395,000, a little bit more than half of that was the tax revenues that came in. The remaining amounts, $100,000 were for town services and $46,000 of other revenues. Further detail in my report. Year-to-date, the revenues in total are $53.9 million, or 92% of the total for the fiscal year, excluding the sale of the old Morgan last year. This year's results are $469,000 higher than the prior year. The current tax levy is 99.5% of the budget, compared to 99.4% this year, so a little bit higher, which is good. Expenses for the month of March were $4.1 million, three quarters of that. $3.1 million is for the education payroll and operating transfer requests. $650,000 was for the payroll and fringe benefits, and the remaining $350 is further detailed in the report, but it's the usual contractual and normal recurring charges. Year-to-date expenses were $42.6 million, 73% of the total year's budget, and that's in line with being three quarters of the way through the fiscal year. And excluding encumbrances, they're trending exactly the same as the prior year. For the forecasting a little bit, as we're getting to the fourth quarter now for fiscal year '22, I'm anticipating that revenues in general are going to have an overall favorable variance due to the additional tax collections that we've seen, as well as the additional town services revenues that you can see in the report. We're still waiting on some state grant revenues that will be received in the fourth quarter. I don't anticipate that we will have any problems receiving the amounts that we've budgeted for those as well. Expenses on the town side, I'm forecasting that will be on or at budget, utilizing the contingency if necessary to cover the overages that we've been talking about since the last meeting, or that you're aware of, which are the police communications overtime, and the DPW snow plowing, sanding, and diesel and gasoline, as well as potentially on the town side for the heat and water expenses, going up for the same reasons as the diesel and gasoline. I'm hoping that's going to be covered by some encumbrances that may not be fully utilized, though, so. But either way, I expect all those overages to be covered by what's remaining in the contingency. The investment balances are $33 million, $29 million of that is unrestricted. The fund balance unassigned has not changed from what we previously reported, 26% of the fiscal year '22 expenditures, $6.5 million, over the 15% town policy, everybody's familiar with those numbers now. Contingency is $143,000, not including the $30,000 transfer that was approved tonight for the DPW, and it'll be $113,000 after that transfer. Just some other things going on in the finance office. Our new AP person is going to be starting on Monday, so we're excited about that. We've been working on the compliance reporting that's due, the first ARPA report is due at the end of this week, so we'll be filing that probably tomorrow, as well as some other state compliance reporting that's required, that we're working on that, too. This time of year, we're starting to begin to prep for year-end, as well as what we need to do for the fiscal year. need to do for the fiscal year '23 budget, getting those set up in the system. And we've also just completed a major shredding event, believe it or not, for the Finance Department. We've gotten rid of over 15 years of documents that we no longer needed. We've shredded, with the state's permission, about 75 boxes, and we expect to do another, probably 50 or 75. This has freed up some badly needed space within our office and also the town vault, so that was a major undertaking. That's it.
Questions?
Any questions?
Sue, do you think that that 113 in contingency is going to all be utilized to balance these?
I do not think that we'll need the whole thing. I mean, I believe we just hired someone in the Communications to replace the, help with the overtime, but that will take some time for that person to get up to speed. So I was forecasting about 30,000 needed there. I don't know if that'll be, not, and I don't know how much is going to be left within the department. DPW may be about the same, and then there was about 10 on the town side. Those are extreme forecasts that I was doing for overages, but there's also other line items and other departments that are going to have some leftover funding, I think, as well. So I don't think we'll need the whole contingency.
Okay.
We'll probably need a portion of it, maybe. It's kind of still too early.
Okay. Thank you.
Does any of the ARPA money have been able to get out?
Been able to.
Go out to people?
There's some encumbrances set for the firewalls, that, the security for that, but that's about it, yeah.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Sue. Item number nine, resolution to approve the accounting of ARPA funding.
Sure, so this is a little bit of a dovetail on what Sue was mentioning. So there's been a steady drumbeat of recommendation that small non-entitlement units of local government, which Clinton is one, should be looking to, for expediency in reporting and ease of accounting and making ARPA a slightly easier thing for us to manage. Should all acknowledge it as revenue replacement and then spend it the way the program recommends it to be spent, but pull it all in as one, one expenditure category rather than the multiple expenditure categories, which all have different reporting requirements with a different tail of documentation that needs to follow each person that would be receiving a check from us. So it's easier for us to then reply to Treasury with our regular reporting if it's all swept into one, one accounting category. So the resolution is acknowledging that we're moving, that we're going to report the money to Treasury as revenue replacement, but we're going to spend it the exact same way it was already approved by the town meeting. And we went through that public process for transparency so the public knows what's going on. So this is just more built and suspenders to make sure we're clear when it comes to reporting and giving clear direction to Sue for how she has to hit, put together the report that goes to Treasury.
Any questions on it? All right, so at this point, we'll just look for a motion to approve the following resolution. Whereas the town of Clinton is a recipient of American Recovery Plan Act ARPA funding from the federal government, and whereas the town went through a public process to appropriate certain amounts of ARPA funds, ultimately through a special town meeting, which were meant for specific ARPA-eligible purposes, and whereas the final rules issued by the Department of Treasury allows for non-entitlement units of government to accept full amount of their ARPA grant, up to 10 million, under the quote-unquote "revenue replacement expenditure" category for ease of reporting and administrative, administration of funding, and whereas the town of Clinton is such a non-entitlement unit of government, now therefore be resolved that the council, the Town Council of the Town of Clinton hereby agrees that the recovery, American Recovery Plan Act funding awarded to the Town of Clinton to date shall be accounted for and reported as revenue replacement, with such funds to be expended as authorized by the special town meeting of March 2nd, 2022. Motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Resolution, council discussions on future projects and correspondents. Does anyone have anything to discuss? Carol.
At the last meeting, we talked about having a workshop to talk about the fire department facility plan.
Yep, I'll go talk about that next.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's also.
Also, I was talking to someone this week, and, I mean, we have the report, on the structural report for Pearson, and a ballpark estimate of what costs would be associated with various uses of the property. But it was pointed out to me that the Town Council has never had a discussion as to whether we want to keep Pearson or not.
Correct.
Do we need to have that discussion and that decision before we go farther with what to do with and about Pearson?
I think ultimately, when we first started the discussion on Pearson with the previous council, it was all about getting the underlying deed restrictions resolved.
Right.
So that at least that would be the first step that we could then, that's resolved, so then the next step would be then, what can we do with the building?
Uh huh.
So I think that's sort of where we've been, I guess, stuck for a while.
Well.
I mean, to have a discussion now about what we want to do with the building, I mean, I guess you could have that discussion, but I mean.
Well, I mean, what if the majority of the council feels like they don't want to keep the building? Then that's a moot discussion then.
Well, you still have to take care of the issue that we have with the AG's office.
Yeah, yeah. And that looks as though we're very close to having that resolved. I mean, the whole point of that is getting a free and clear title.
So you can't really do anything with the building right now?
So then you, then you decide what you want to do with the building. I mean, then we are free to make decisions about what to do with the building, but.
Would it be better for you to, we complete our discussions with the AG's office before going to court? That gives us better information to understand what paths we might want to proceed to.
So, okay, all right.
Potential uses of retain it, dispose of it, do some other permutation of leasing it and whatnot, so that it's clear what path we're following for public engagement, for official decisions the council have to make. Get past one hurdle with the AG first.
All right. Oh, okay. I thought we were close to the end of that.
No.
Oh, dear. Okay, sorry. All right, that's it for me.
Anybody else?
Were there any correspondences we should discuss? I didn't get any. Okay.
No.
All right.
Anybody else? All right, here are none. We can then move on to the Chairman's report. So a couple of things. So the Fire Department workshop, so that has been set up and it's confirmed for May 18th at 6:00 PM. So that'll be before our May 18th meeting, so that we will get the Fire Department Facility report directly from them. So that was set up and that's ready. That's May 18th at 6:00 PM, right before our regular monthly meeting. Next, obviously, we've talked about it, so now I want to kind of set the date so that we can talk about the goal-setting workshop, so that we can get that in place. We have an annual budget meeting next week on the 4th at 6:00 PM. So if we want, we could schedule a budget, I mean, a goal-setting workshop before that, 5:00 o'clock, if people are good with that.
Is that a Wednesday again?
That is a Wednesday. Good with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
So that's set in stone. And then, yeah, and I mean, I think, I think the goal-setting, obviously, workshop is important, and I think a lot of it also has to do with, you know, when there's a changeover in council, there's new members, you know, I guess we've, we've kind of had the infancy stages. We've been through the couple of months now that we've been through, I mean, because you jump into it, obviously. As soon as, you know, the new council is seated, the budget starts, the discussions start, the workshops of that start, and it, you know, at this point, maybe take a step back so that we all understand kind of what the council's working for, what our responsibilities are. I mean, there's a charter that dictates kind of what we should be doing, what we should, you know, what everybody should be doing, and I think that also should be part of that goal-setting workshop, so that we all understand that we are, again, working towards the same things. I mean, I think it's imperative that this council works together, regardless of party affiliation, to make sure that we are all working for the same thing. You know, so I think it's good to, to have those conversations. You know, we've had some, some kind of heated discussions, some, you know, lengthy conversations about things, but I think, you know, taking that step back, having the goal-setting workshop, and then a discussion about how the council operates and how, you know, what our responsibilities are, and what we should and shouldn't be working on. And I think that plays an important role in what we'll, we'll do going forward, so.
Is that also our morning meeting day?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a busy day.
What was that question?
The morning meeting on the 4th. So that we have the morning meeting, we have the 6:00 budget, annual budget, and then 5:00 we'll do the goal-setting workshop. Fun-filled day. Hey, listen, you get it over one day, then it's all done. You know what I mean? Pack it in one day.
It's one day.
It's one day, okay? Then you got Thursday to regroup. All right, so, right, that's it. All right, so we're good. I'm done. On to Town Manager's report.
So you have the written report, giving you, two new ARPA applications have come in. All beneficiaries of the program will need to sign a grant agreement, so I'm finalizing the grant agreement, which was contingent upon this discussion tonight, so I know what the reporting requirements are of those entities back to us. Harbor management plan, we've negotiated what the scope of work is going to be. A little bit of extra work is going to get picked up by the Harbor Management Commission, so we're not paying the consultants to do that work. So we found a nice balance so that we can move forward and engage the consultant to get that ball rolling. Hiring, we've cleared three of the five vacancies that are open now. Interviews took place for senior program coordinator and going through that, going through the vetting of them. Program coordinator for human services, the interviews for that are upcoming, so hopefully we can wrap up the last two hirings. And I was informed by Todd today that we'll have another vacancy to have to fill in public works, so it seems as if it's the season for perpetual hiring. Beach concession stands, Park and Rec Commission took a position at a prior meeting, asking that the Town Council not look at that as a revenue generator, rather it be an amenity, so if they can find a vendor to operate it at no rent or de minimis token rent of a dollar, that's, that's kind of what they would prefer, so that they can get somebody in there providing foodstuffs and the like to the public. I coordinated with Bo in order to get him on board and understand what his next step should be. I gave him some potential vendors to follow up on. So one of those vendors is in fact interested, so it looks like we will have a vendor at the beach. We just need to sort of finalize the particulars, and that would come to the council, hopefully, at your meeting next week to approve the agreement for a new vendor to operate at the beach.
Carl, would that new vendor be under those conditions that you mentioned with no rent or low rent and no utilities or just appropriate?
So it's, we're framing it based on the input from the Park and Rec Commission. Other items for you to be aware, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant that was going to fund the bridge replacement project over the Hammock River, that's been moving forward, so the funding request has been submitted for review. We'll know next month whether we've been invited to round two of the review process or whether we got stopped at round one. As I noted in prior reports, we had some students from the University of Connecticut trying to help with a coastal resiliency plan. Those students have kind of finished their project. They made a presentation to John Gaskowski and myself, outlining things that we should be thinking about for coastal resiliency, and dovetail into a larger plan, which works nicely with what I reported on previously of conversations we're having at a regional level with Westbrook and Old Saybrook trying to pursue a grant for a regional coastal resiliency plan, to take a concept and turn it into something that is more project-specific. This is an item that was discussed previously as part of the natural hazards mitigation strategy, and so it's taking that plan and keeping, keeping, moving that process forward. Electronic meetings, there was a bill that was approved by the House of Representatives which allows for electronic meetings to continue to exist. The Senate has passed that bill also. Now, that's off to the governor's office. It was confirmed later this evening by the Council of Small Towns that the governor's office intends to have the governor sign the bill prior to April 30th, which would be great, because that's when the current allowance expires. So that electronic meetings, based on how they have operated thus far, would continue to be an option for boards and commissions going forward, following the rules that have been put in place since COVID has become a thing. And beyond that, got work to do for next week's meeting.
Questions, comments?
Did I read something about finding someone who's talking about capping the dump significantly less?
Yeah, so as I reported previously, we issued an RFP looking for entities that could assist us in capping the landfill for beneficial reuse. We received three RFPs. Looks like we have a vendor who could do it and has an interesting approach that's sort of compelling to, to consider further. Town engineer is chasing down a few loose ends on his side, and I'm waiting for a contract to come in so that we get a little bit more specificity to wrap our arms around, but at least if it all pans out and it looks like it's all right, that's an opportunity to address a site that's been left idle, and it could be converted into something else that has a beneficial use to the town, like a solar array, which I've also reported. I've had interest in that from the solar developer community as a, as a site for a solar farm.
Anyone else? All good? On to liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report tonight?
I went to the EDC meeting and I'm again talking about the electric coalition and working with the CNC machinery at Morgan School and the success they've had. They're looking to do, it's an interesting thing, I don't know what it's got to do with economic development, but the school is, has a team of students, they're going to compete in a thing called an electrathon, where they're going to have an electrically driven vehicle, and they're going to race other high schools in the state at Lime Rock on May 20th. We'll see what happens.
Yeah.
And what they want to try to do is local video people to make sure they're present so they can kind of put it on the network, or at least YouTube.
Are they selling patches for the car?
What's that?
They selling patches for like sponsors?
I didn't get into, I didn't hear him say anything about that. Unfortunately, they're saying it's not open to the public either, which is a shame, because I'd love to go see it.
Anybody else? Thank you, Tom.
I was happy to learn that CPS people have removed all the dead plants and they replanted. So, and I took a look at it and it looks better.
Who else? Wow, nice, all right. Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carol?
Abstained?
May I?
Thank you.